Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wednesday, October 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Can we stand for the pledge, please? And Commissioner Draculich, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. Michelle, can we please have roll call?
Alex Velto is absent. J.D. Draculich?
Here.
Peter Gower?
Here.
Mark Johnson?
Here.
Arthur Munoz?
Here.
Sylvia Villanueva?
Here.
Kathleen Taylor?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item number three, public comment. Michelle, do we have any public comment for this item, for general public comment?
I only received one email for this item. Oh, and then you do have a public comment card in front of you. But the item that we received was in regards to street racing. That was forwarded to the Planning Commission and has been entered into the record.
Okay, so is this one for general public comment?
Yes, it is.
Okay, looks like... Taissa? Lencienko? I'm gonna mess this up, I'm very sorry. Please come to the front. You have three minutes to state your name for the record. It says that the comments are attached, but I don't see any.
I apologize, I brought one copy, but they will be left with you after.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Perfect. My name is Taissa Lencienko, T-A-I-S-S-A-L-Y-T-C-H-E-N-K-O. I'm the Vice President of the Graduate Student Association at the University of Nevada Reno. I am here to discuss a serious matter which has impacted our student community. This is a story of one graduate student at UNR. However, this issue is currently affecting a number of undergraduates who are, at this time, still without a permanent home. This is in relation to student housing, Park Place Reno, located on 941 North Virginia Street, which is projected to be completed before, which was projected to be completed before fall 2021 semester, but has failed to meet this deadline and continues to postpone the move-in date for at least half of its residents to this day. In July, the management company postponed the move-in date from July 30th to September 1st, with the following options given for accommodation. In summary, option one, find your own home and get $1,000 gift card at MoveIn. Option two, shared Circus Circus room with another resident and a gift card at MoveIn. Option three, single occupancy room at Circus Circus with no gift card. Please note that option two and three, students are still paying rent at Park Place for a room they are not currently living in, and with no option to get out of the lease agreement. Circus Circus only has a small refrigerator with no accommodation for students to cook. Our students cannot afford to buy three meals a day. To put it in perspective, this graduate student gets a stipend of $1,945, with over 70%, so 1,400 of it spent on rent alone, not including the cost of parking. The student had to ration meals to once a day and had to turn to local food pantries to get help. As bad as this was, Park Place postponed move-in multiple times after the first notice, and with current move-in date for half of its residents set to mid-November. At this time, I ask you to hold such companies accountable for not only meeting deadlines, since this is a third-party company over which UNR administration does not have direct authority. The accommodation provided by the company was not sufficient, and it continues to take advantage of student vulnerability and lack of understanding of their rights as tenants. I urge you to review the accommodations provided, and if you find them as insufficient as we do, bring the company to justice in paying reparations to its residents. Since this is a planning meeting, I also ask you to consider this issue for future housing projects, students or otherwise, as a similar issue deeply impacted students in 2017. These challenges will continue so long as we continue to fail to address Reno housing crisis. By not supporting affordable housing, our community continues to suffer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have any other public comment, general public comment? We will close public comment and move on to item number four, which is the approval of minutes from the August 4th Planning Commission meeting.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gower moved to approve.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Draculich, shall I second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments?
Oh, excuse me, no, I was just ready to say...
Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item number five. This is a public hearing. This is case number LDC21-00071, United Nissan of Reno. This is a request for a conditional use permit and a, yeah, conditional use permit and a major deviation. Do we have a presentation from the applicant? Or do we have a presentation from Nate?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Gilbert, Senior Planner, for the record. The applicant has submitted to the administrator a request for postponement before 5:00 this evening's hearing. Therefore, the item will be re-noticed to a future date. Commission does not need to open the item, but may wish to take public comment if there is any.
Okay, do we have any public comment for this item, Michelle?
I did not receive any public comment for this item.
Okay, we'll close public comment, and I guess this item will be removed from the agenda and set for a later date. We don't need a date sensitive. Okay. Moving on to item number 5.2. This is case number LDC22-0009, Shar Residence. This is a request for a major deviation. Do we have a presentation from staff? Or the applicant? Sorry.
We emailed... Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Taylor and the rest of the commissioners, I want to thank you for giving me the time to come and talk to you about the project and explain what we're hoping to do. My name is Patrick Walsh, I'm a cohabitant with my wife, Jackie Snow. She's been in the house since 2013. And we're hoping to do a relatively reasonably small addition, I think. And can I change slides here? Or do I ask for next slide?
You can control it with the mouse or that, yeah.
So, to start with, the home is a single-family residence at the intersection of Shar Circle and LaFond Drive. It's, it was built in 1959 and has somewhat unique neighborhood. If you've been in the Driscoll Hills, most of the houses are very close to the street, and so the major deviation we're asking for is setbacks that are compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. So, I'll go relatively quickly.
I'm sorry, could you speak closer to the mic so everybody can hear you? Thank you.
Sorry, better? Okay. So, we're requesting a major deviation so that we can reduce the setbacks and the city code to be within the infill standards of the neighborhood. And I'd like to go through and explain briefly about the project description, the major deviation request, justification for why we need the deviation, talk a little about neighborhood standards, I have some photos to show what the neighborhood looks like, talk about how we've consulted and considered the adjacent and nearby neighbors, and then address the community comments. So, to start with, what we're looking for is a two-story addition on the northwest side to an existing 1959 home. Really, we need the space so family members can visit with us when they come in from out of town, and to modernize the electrical system and various other parts of the house. It has a subterranean garage now accessed from LaFond Drive, and it will remove the existing Shar Circle driveway. So, really, the two main issues are the driveway, which there will be a single driveway at the end, and the reduced setbacks. To give you an idea of floor plan, the, this is a diagram of the house with north, really, to the top left of the image. The existing house has three bedrooms and some living space, and the screen outline is what we're proposing to add. So, it's a relatively small addition to the house. Again, we're asking for the setbacks partly out of consideration for the view shed of nearby houses, and to change the front door, so it comes off of Shar Circle instead of seeming like a back door, which is a bit hard to see near the circular closet. So, again, the new addition is just that green outline, and then a second story that has a bedroom and a bathroom. So, this was previously approved, I think, by the city council to have reduced setbacks actually smaller than what we're asking for. When we intended to do this as a two-phase project, there wasn't enough funds at the time of the first part of the project to continue with this, so really, the setbacks were previously approved, and we're just asking to have those setbacks approved again. As I said, the deviation request, the existing house is 17 feet from Shar Circle, and we're asking for the new addition to be 20 feet 8 inches from Shar Circle, so it's actually farther from the street than the existing setback of the house. And then, seven and a quarter feet from LaFond easement, which actually puts it 37 and a half feet from the existing road edge. So, I'll talk a little bit about that easement, because it's a steep hill that's not usable by the city, anyway. The property is pretty unique. As I said, it's at the corner of these two streets, so Shar Circle heading northwest and LaFond heading northeast. Again, we have the plan for the house here. The dark gray is the planned development, and the red area is what we really can't develop, because this part of town doesn't have sewer, there are septic fields, leach fields, and a repair field, and then a utility easement along the south edge of the property. So, really, it's the only possible location that we can develop on the property. Again, the setbacks really predate the Reno codes throughout the neighborhood, but especially in this house, which is, I think, the oldest one on the hill. And the major deviation request will allow us to construct, to conform to neighborhood setbacks, sorry, neighborhood infill setbacks. Again, for justification, I mentioned the lack of sewer and having to manage a septic system, the utility easement, and the LaFond Drive easement, which is 30 feet from the road edge. Nearby setbacks range from 5 to more than 30 feet, and, as I said, the prior finding by the city council allowed the reduced setbacks, but wasn't included in the permitting, because we didn't have the budget to do the work. So, we now have the money to do the work, and we're just looking to get these re-approved. So, I mentioned the easements, I'll show some photos of that, but this is a steep hill where if the city were to develop the easement, you'd be making eight-foot-tall driveways for the residents that already have driveways on that street, and we're just looking to put essentially a similar driveway into a subterranean garage. And maybe a side note, farther up the hill, part of that easement's already been abandoned for the 29, sorry, 2090 LaFond Drive house. I included a screen capture of the previous permit application, which mentions the five-foot setback from the easement and 30 feet from the front, really just for completeness. And then here, I'm switching to, I guess it's a satellite or an aerial photo. The white house with the blue arrow is the house that we're looking to add to, and the pink bars are the setbacks along LaFond Drive. So, you can see the setbacks are as small as, really, less than 5 feet, so I'll show a picture of that house across the way. And then similarly, on Shar Circle, our house is only 17 feet back, and the others are all less than 30 feet. So, really, none of the houses in the immediate neighborhood conform to existing standards. And when you zoom out a bit, it's similar throughout. So, I mentioned, if you look at the very bottom-left part of that, the LaFond setback actually takes a step, and the addition for that house is 15, less than 15 feet from the road edge, not just the easement. So, at this point, we're not asking to do anything with the easement, we're staying within the property line, seven and a half, or sorry, seven and a quarter feet from the LaFond easement. So, this is a photo looking uphill. The left side is our house, so the 2040, 30-foot easement takes up past that tall pine tree, or about to that tall pine tree, and then you can see how close the other houses are with really less than 5-foot setbacks to the road immediately across the street. Looking from really our house to that house, you can see the house is built right up to road edge, so there's a wall, a roof, and their front doors about 5 feet from the road edge. So, this gives you an idea of the sort of eclectic neighborhood that we live in, with houses built really right up to road edge and right up to easements. Similarly, I mentioned the maybe lack of value for the easement for the city. It's a steep hill, there are driveways that come in, in the adjacent two houses, 2050 LaFond and 2020. You can see part of our easement there, the 2040 Shar on the left side. And so, as I said, if the city were to try to do something with this 30-foot easement, you'd be creating an 8-foot-tall driveway for people that couldn't get to their existing houses. So, there's really, I don't think, anything to do with this easement. And so, in our minds, the request for reduced setbacks is reasonable and in concert with the existing neighborhood. As soon as we put together this plan, which is still a little bit conceptual, we consulted neighbors, the immediate two neighbors adjacent to the property are very supportive. One of them came to the Neighborhood Advisory Board meeting and expressed support, the other one, I think, has been supportive. We talked with the neighbors across the street at 2050 Shar. This photo is actually taken from their deck, because I really wanted to understand where their views are and how we can minimize the impact. So, despite it not being required, this is what we've been trying to do with the project, is move walls, reduce the height, so that we don't impact their view shed. And the first thing we did was we actually reduced the height by 2 feet, so we're down to 21 feet, which is well below the 35 feet in the code, and we moved both walls northward to reduce the impact view. So, I've made, if you can see it, it's a lightly dashed outline, very rough about where this two-story addition would be. It's a little bit less tall than the existing pine trees, and really, what we're looking to do is remove the pine trees, build this two-story addition, and really have a minimal impact on the view shed of the property across the street. We'll have to remove those trees, as I mentioned. The intent and requirement by the city recommendation is to replace the trees on a two-to-one basis, and as it is, we've consulted an arborist for the existing plantings, and we'll continue to do that when we plant the new six trees, if we can't move the trees that are existing. It's a little bit hard to see, but those three trees that I point to with the blue arrows, there's a tree in front of one of them, so really, that won't change very much. And maybe as a side note, the three trees in the foreground are on the neighbor's property blocking their own view, so I think you'll hear a little bit about that view. It seems like there's been a lot of concern about it, but we really are trying to do everything we can to minimize our impact on the view, despite it not being required by our rights to develop our property. Since we moved here, we've planted 20 trees before any of this, so we've already been developing the property to have a nice landscape, and it's quite nicer than move-in time. If you were to go back and look at the street view from 2013, it's a totally different property. In terms of mitigation, as I mentioned already, we removed some walls and reduced height, and recently, we've requested additional discussions, so that we can make sure that we put the walls in places where they won't be obtrusive, and the requests for meetings have been ignored. So, we're at a spot where we realize that the property owner across the street is, doesn't like the project, but we think we're within our rights and within the city code to develop it, and we intend to continue to reduce impact on their view shed as we finalize plans for the project. Just, I guess, last week, we got comments to, to the city's report, or with the city's report, and want to emphasize that there have been proper inspections, and our design is site-sensitive, safe, and compatible with the neighborhood fabric. The main comments that I took away from the public comments so far are, there were several about a three-story structure, which it's not, it's a two-story structure with a below-ground garage, but still, we're 21 feet above grade, so it's a flat roof. There are single-story and nearby two-story houses that have quite a bit higher than 21-foot roofs, and even at the basement level, it's still 4 feet below the 35-foot code, so there's, everything here is within the code. And, as I said, we're doing everything we can to reduce impacts to the view shed of the one house that we think is impacted. There was a suggestion that we could build elsewhere, I showed a slide about that, there's really nowhere else on the property to build, and there was a comment about a blind driveway, but again, this is, has an approved visibility triangle on each side to make sure that it's, it's not, it's not a blind driveway. And as I showed in the previous photos, there are several other driveways within probably 100 feet of our planned driveway. So, in summary, this is what we want the house to look like. As I said, there's some maybe wiggle room with the walls, we're considering taking out the little deck there, so we can move the whole structure to the left, really with the intent of removing any intrusion on the neighbor's view shed, and I would ask that the Planning Commission support the city's recommendation and allow us to have the major deviation to allow construction to proceed. And thank you again for your time, I very much appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Now, do we have a presentation from Nate? Nathan, sorry.
Hi. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Senior Planner. First, I want to correct the map in your staff report, it was two parcels off the subject. Parcel is the applicant represented, is on the southeast corner of LaFond and Shar. So, the request before you this evening is for a 50% deviation from the 14 and 1/2 front-yard setback on LaFond Drive, and a 31% deviation from the 30-foot front-yard setback on Shar Circle. The subject site and the entire surrounding neighborhood is zoned, single-family residential, three units per acre, and is master-planned, single-family neighborhood. Key issues in staff analysis was compatibility with the surrounding front setbacks and overall site design with code compliance. From compatibility, as Patrick shared, the neighborhood front backs in the area vary widely, from 4 to 34 feet. The actual code standards with how Reno Municipal Code treats infill development is a little more specific, and that takes the range of front setbacks on the block face, on the existing block face. So, that would be the front setbacks, as measured from the parcel line, east of Shar Circle and south of LaFond. From that, the applicant selected the 14 and 1/2-foot front setback as the base place to start. And code treats secondary fronts, in this instance, it's a corner lot, with the standard 30-foot front setback that would be required in that zoning district. For compatibility, as Patrick mentioned, the existing right-of-way buffers are fairly extensive. On LaFond, there's a 30 and 1/4-foot section of right-of-way, and Shar Circle has about 15. So, setbacks with the approved deviation, measured from the property line, the applicant's requesting a 50% reduction, so that front property line measured from the parcel would be 7 and 1/4 and 20, roughly 20 and 1/2 on Shar Circle. So, what that creates with the existing right-of-way is a functional setback from the street of about 37.5 on LaFond and 35.6 on Shar Circle. From site design, you know, the request before you is for deviation from the front setbacks. Staff's analysis looks at the zoning, the tentative proposed design. The SF3 zone allows for this building expansion and all building expansions per Reno Municipal Code in the SF3 zone to a 35-foot building height and up to 2 and 1/2 stories. The applicant's proposing a functional 21-foot height, two stories, as viewed from Shar Circle and measured from Shar Circle, and 30.9 feet, 2 and 1/2 stories, including the subterranean garage on LaFond Drive. Proposed LaFond Drive meets all engineering standards, adheres to site triangle analysis, the retaining walls are properly designed for vision. In order to encroach that driveway into the public right-of-way, they would need appropriate permits from the Public Works Division. Staff recommends approval of the major deviation based on compliance with the applicable findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you, Nathan. Commissioners, let's do disclosure, and then we'll move into public comment. Start with Commissioner Gower.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I've received and read the emails.
Commissioner Munoz, same disclosures.
Commissioner Villanueva, I visited the site, I read emails and got some voicemails on this as well.
Commissioner Draculich, familiar with the site and read and received emails and voicemails.
Commissioner Johnson received and read the emails and visited the site?
Commissioner Taylor received and read emails, visited the site. When I was visiting the site, had the chance, the applicant was out, so I talked to him a little bit, too. Okay, let's move into public comment. So, first, we all have three minutes, if you come up to the podium, please, and state your name. It's Rita Greggio, Sierra Crest Business Law Group, she is in opposition. And then we'll have Christina Dombvari.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before I start, I'd like to ask a... Good evening, before I start, I'd like to ask a question. We submitted a letter that was copied to Mr. Pingree and Mr. Gilbert yesterday morning. I don't know if the Commissioners had an opportunity to review it. I do have a couple of copies, I have three, so I don't know if...
So, you can leave it with Michelle, we're not, this is public comment, so you just will be giving us public comment, we won't be responding to you during this interaction.
Just for some of the exhibits that are in this packet that I may make reference to, if I show you, I don't know if you'll see it, but, so...
You can leave it with Michelle.
Okay.
Thank you.
We already have that, it has been entered as part of the record. We already have it.
We have it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for answering my question. So, my name is Rita Greggio, and I represent John and Carolyn Westermeyer. Mr. and Mrs. Westermeyer are residents of 2050 Shar Circle, which is directly across the street from the site of the proposed project. In advising...
Yeah, my name is Ryan Hoyk, I am opposed to the deviation of the...
In advising the city council on these matters, you're tasked with discussing urban planning and subdivision regulation, and that's what we would like to talk about today. Part of the materials that we've reviewed in this matter do not make mention of the fact that the Driscoll Hills subdivision is subject to a declaration, and that declaration does have certain limitations on any construction which limits neighbors' visibility. Now, the Driscoll Hills subdivision contains a little under 30 lots, not all of which are developed, and in light of this, in light of the fact that this subdivision has maybe 25 or more homeowners, and in light of the fact that there have been, according to the last published report, at least six oppositions to this project, there is an issue as to whether or not the declarations are relevant, and whether this commission should take those declarations into consideration in approving this major deviation. As you know, one of the findings that you must make in approving this major deviation is that the project will not have a negative impact on adjacent properties. And certainly, as you saw from the pictures that were put up, one of which was taken from the Westermeyers' deck, the building will obstruct almost entirely the view that the Westermeyers do have from their home. This is not a small matter, it's a matter of property values, and it's a matter that affects more than just the Westermeyers. Other neighbors will be impacted by the structure, which will be blocking more than one homeowner's view. And again, once their home is impacted by the loss of value caused by the loss of their view, it will have an impact on the rest of the subdivision, which, as I mentioned, is quite small. The letter I submitted has a copy of the declaration at issue. The declaration, it's valid, it's a contract, and it is intended to protect the views that the neighbors have. So, with that in mind, I would say that this commission should get a legal opinion from the city attorney regarding the applicability of that declaration. As I stated, this commission is tasked with addressing issues of subdivision regulation, and we do believe that this impact, that this project will have a significant negative impact, not only on 2050 Shar, but on other neighboring properties as well.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Christina Dombvari. And then after that, we have Linda Nepper, I believe.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Christina Dombvari. I am an owner of a property in the same subdivision, also local real estate broker. I believe that all what you heard from the previous speaker is applicable to this case, it should seriously be evaluated. The limitations set in place for the property owners to protect their views, in my opinion, needs to be upheld. We cannot have property owners subjected... We cannot have property owners subjected to developments that negatively affect the value of their properties. We all ended up buying properties in that area based on the protections that we have for our views. And what we've seen proposed would really seriously be against those rules laid down many, many years ago, and, in my opinion, they should be followed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Linda? And then Bill Von Full.
We do not wish to speak.
Okay. Do you want me to read your statements?
Yeah.
Okay. So Linda, it's K-N-E-P-P-E-R, is, excuse me, in opposition. Comments are, it doesn't appear to have the driveway onto a narrow street, LaFond. A lot of us walk or bike on that street. The higher addition seems to not be with property in the area. And then Bill Von Full is in opposition. Comments, a blind driveway from a subterranean garage over the crest of a hill is not safe. Second-story blocks neighbor... Second-story blocks neighbors' views. And then the last one I have is Tom Disted. Did you wish to make a statement up here? Or do you want me to read your statement? Okay. This, he's in opposition. LaFond is already a dangerous street. This would be an almost blind driveway. Instead of changing the neighborhood, please move. Okay. Do we have any other public comment?
We did receive public comment. They reported to the Planning Commission and are entered into the record. We also do have voicemails that I will play for you now.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Ryan Hoick. I am opposed to the deviation of the setbacks at the residence at the corner of LaFond and Shar. So I just wanted to make that noted. I think it would be less than ideal thing. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Hoick, H-O-E-C-K. I reside at 1720A Alexander Hamilton Drive, about a block from the concerned residence. Case number, good question. I'm looking at the city of Reno. It could be LDC22-0009. A request has been made for a major deviation to reduce the front yard setback on LaFond Drive to seven and a quarter feet, and the front yard setback on Shar Circle to 20 feet, a 31% deviation. I am completely opposed to this. I don't know if we will run out of time before I can explain it all, but I regularly, at least three to four times a week, walk my dogs up there. We have no sidewalk. And as you're headed north on Shar, making a right or going east onto LaFond Drive, it would completely block the view. It would make it even more dangerous than that road already is. This is just above the Catholic Church up there, and that whole road is a real, real hazard, and this would just make it worse. I hope I'm giving you enough information. Date and time of the hearing is today at 5:00 PM. And I'm looking for any other numbers. Important notice about your property, parcel 009-311-13. I'm also completely against the second story being added on, as several friends of mine have views of the city there, and it would completely block them. But most concerned is the dangerous intersection there that is already terrible. So I hope I've given you enough information. Again, Tom Hoick, 1720A Alexander Hamilton Drive, Reno, Nevada, 89509-775-313-2152. Thank you. Bye.
My name is Warren, W-A-R-R-E-N Lerude, L-E-R-U-D-E, calling on October 15, 2001, to protest against the expansion on Shar Circle. The case number is 1D-C220009. Uh, case number, LDC22-00099. And... So that's, I guess, where I go. Thank you. Well, the project number is... It's on Shar Residence, LDC22-00099, Shar Residence. So I protest against it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amanda Sama, and I am calling to oppose the deviation to the setbacks for the residence at the corner of LaFond and Shar. Please take note of that. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
My name is Frank Morfisi. I'm at 2110 Driscoll Drive, 775-322-0023. Case number is LDC220009. And I am, my wife and I want to say no to the project. It's not in line with the neighborhood. It blocks a long-time view for our neighbors, and we just don't think that the way it's written up, it tells us what we want to know. But the vote is no. Thank you for taking our call.
Okay, and that's it for public comment.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak? We will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions of either the applicant or of Nathan. Who'd like to go? Commissioner Munoz.
Thank you. Commissioner Munoz, for the record, the applicant, please step up, please. On your presentation, you showed pictures from the house directly across the street off of Shar, where it was a partially obstructed view that was already kind of blocked by the trees there. You said that the people that lived in that house were the ones that were going to be specifically affected, yet they didn't have a problem with the build? Did I hear that right?
No, my impression is that they are opposed to the...
They are opposed to it.
I think one of the, I think one of the public comments was from them, yes.
Got it, okay. That's all, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I have a question for Nathan for clarification, please? Nathan, can you reiterate the scope of our decision tonight?
The request this evening for the Planning Commission is a deviation to the front setbacks.
We're looking specifically at the setbacks. We're not looking at the height of the building, the design of the driveway. Staff has, will review that as part of a separate process outside of our scope this evening to weigh in on that, or provide any sort of commentary to that effect.
That would be staff's recommendation. Final building plans would be subject to all adopted zoning code standards.
Thank you.
Commissioner Villanueva?
I also have a question for you, Nathan. It may be for general counsel, too, I'm not sure. It's also my understanding our scope is even limited with respect to the CCNRs, right? We don't really have any oversight over that. That's more of a civil matter, right?
That's correct. The city does not get involved in HOA or CCNR regulations. That would be a civil matter.
Great, thank you.
Other Commissioners, questions? Discussion? Motion?
Madam Chair, ready to make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Gower?
Thank you. And just a comment before I make a motion, you know, I certainly understand the comments and the concerns from the neighbors, and, you know, I hope you understand that the scope of our decision space is very limited in this situation to what we're looking at here, which is the major deviation request. So based on that, I can make all the findings in this case, and I'm ready to make the motion for case number LDC22-0009. Shar Residence, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the major deviation, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. As I mentioned, Madam Chair, I can make all the findings.
Commissioner Dracula, just a second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Madam Chair, just a...
Commissioner Johnson?
Comment to follow along with that. With respect to the scope that we're looking at here, the scope that we're being asked to review is the deviation and the location of the setback of the building. The height of the building, again, is not part of our purview. I think that was what was discussed. And it is possible to construct any number of things within the setbacks that we are looking at this evening. So based on that, and again, I appreciate the questions from the Commissioners about defining what our scope of review is, because as the project in its whole is presented, there's a lot more information here, but it's beyond what we're able to look at. So I appreciate the comments and the questions on that, and did help my thinking in terms of making the findings. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Good luck with your project, and we will move on to item number 5.3. This is case number LDC22-0007, Santeraculacy Property Secondary Access. This is a request for a special use permit for grading with fills greater than 10 feet and grading within the open space.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Michael Poney, on behalf of the applicant, Toll North Reno. With me tonight in the audience is Chris Baker from Manhart Consulting, who will be available to answer any questions. The application seeks a special use permit for a development of a required 35-foot, two-lane secondary access road in the M-God Planning Area 3. Special use permit review is triggered as the roadway design will require fills greater than 10 feet and grading within an open space zone. The project is located on 2.12 acres over three different parcels, east of the Union Pacific Railroad tracks in Verde, next to the South Verde Road. This illustration shows an overview of the proposed roadway and its vicinity to the adjacent railroad tracks and Interstate 80. The road will provide required secondary access to the Santeraculacy Project to the east, as well as the M-God Planning Area 3. As I mentioned, there's three parcels that the project will cross, and this is, shows the zoning of them. Those currently zoned are public facility right-of-way, large lot residential, and open space. As you can see, about 90% of the road is located within the railroads right-of-way, that is, a public facility master plan and public facility zoning. Only a small portion will cross an open space zoning area, and that's within the Santeraculacy Project and was contemplated by the tentative map approval. Staff has concluded that the project is compatible with these surrounding land uses and conforms with the master plan, and furthers at least nine master plan goals and policies satisfying SUP findings A and B. Now, the issue tonight, of course, is not whether a road should be built. That has already been decided and approved by the city council. The M-God circulation plan shown on the left requires the secondary access road to connect to South Verde Road. And of course, the tentative map approval for Santeraculacy not only approved the construction, but required the construction of the secondary access road for public safety purposes. And at that time, the roadway was contemplated anywhere within that corridor shown in yellow. The council specifically evaluated traffic impacts at that time and found the road necessary and compatible when it mandated its construction. As I mentioned, the tentative map approved a corridor in which the roadway would be located, and following those approvals, an initial alignment shown in gray was explored. However, after working with the Union Pacific Railroad and an adjacent property owner, a better alignment was identified, shown in green, which is a substantial improvement over the initial alignment. First, the initial alignment proved unacceptable to the railroad. The proximity to the tracks would impair their rail operations. The railroad prefers the green alignment. Second, the preferred alignment reduces impacts on the adjacent residential owner to the south and facilitated a land swap, which will provide additional benefits to that owner. Third, it reduces the overall length of the road by about half, which substantially reduces grading, environmental, and visual impacts. And finally, the new alignment remains consistent with code, with the 2019 traffic study and traffic-related conditions of approval, and ensures the required level of service standards will still be maintained. Again, no additional traffic impacts are created by this alignment. It's the same cars, same outlet. Turning to project design, so knowing a roads will be built in this area, the question tonight is whether the project design complies with your code and, as conditioned, is designed to mitigate the need for the fills over 10 feet and the grading in the open space. As staff has concluded, the project does exactly that. Site plan shows the proposed alignment connecting South Verde Road to the left, to the Santerac Development up on the right. The proposed alignment will improve the South Verde Road intersection, and notably will eliminate any at-need rail crossings. Sorry, at-grade rail crossings. It includes a six-foot sidewalk for pedestrian access, consistent with the M-God pedestrian trails and access requirements. And we know a road has to be constructed somewhere on this slope, and as this photo simulation demonstrates, the road has been designed to have the least visual impacts of any alternative. The design shortens the length of the road and has fewer grading impacts over other alternatives. The alignment preserves the old-growth trees and preserves the ridge line. This new alignment will be landscaped with revegetation consistent with the surrounding aesthetics and code standards, and one-to-one site tree replacement will be provided for the few trees that will be removed for construction. As mentioned, it's the preferred alignment of the railroad and the adjacent owner, and it meets M-God design requirements, including fences and walls in hillside development. Due to the topography, grading will result in fills over 10 feet, but a number of design elements and conditions of approval have been added to minimize visual impacts and blend with the topography. As this photo simulation demonstrates, the project has been designed with a number of features to minimize those impacts. Retaining walls will be benched to reduce the wall height and overall grading. Geotech analysis will ensure compliance with city code and grading standards, including slope stabilization, locations of cuts and fills, noxious weed abatement, and revegetation. Soil nail retaining wall treatment will be utilized to emulate natural rock appearance, as you can see up on the left, consistent with the existing environment. And decorative retaining walls will be treated in earth-tone colors to match the surrounding areas. In the final design, we'll be submitted with plans, but these pictures are illustrative of the type of intended rock work lurk, look for these walls. As I mentioned, there's three fills over 10 feet, shown in green on this slide. The maximum fill will be 20.8 feet. Generally, the roadway follows existing contours on the site. Conditions 8 through 10 address enhanced grading techniques that will mitigate impacts of these fills. One public comment that we did receive asked about impacts, if any, to the steamboat ditch. As the steamboat ditch traverses this entire hillside, any alignment of this required access road will have to cross that ditch. But the applicant has been coordinating closely with the steamboat ditch engineers and will follow steamboat encroachment requirements. The final design will accommodate steamboat's operational and maintenance standards and mitigate any impacts on irrigation operations. Additionally, condition 12 has been added to ensure compliance with steamboat's requirements. Pedestrian trails and connectivity will also be provided, consistent with the M-God and tentative map conditions of approval. Again, photo simulations demonstrate the project has been located and designed in a manner to minimize visual and environmental impacts. Looking east from the adjacent... Looking east from the adjacent railroad tracks and the Culacy Ranch Road, you can see the proposed roadway is well-screened and barely visible from those locations. This photo simulation shows a view looking eastward from Interstate 80. Again, as you can see, the alignment and the design of the road are minimally intrusive, and you can see some of those decorative rock work features highlighted in the various boxes in red. In conclusion, as recognized by staff, the proposal is compatible with surrounding land uses. It substantially conforms with the Reno master plan, the M-God, and your grading code. It mitigates traffic impacts and provides a safe pedestrian environment. The location, scale, and overall design is compatible with the surrounding development. It minimizes impacts on rail operations, mitigates aesthetic and environmental impacts to ensure that this required roadway will be constructed in the least obtrusive manner in order to facilitate the required access for public safety purposes. With that, we would submit that all special use permit findings can be made and ask for your approval tonight. And we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan, do you have a presentation? It's all you tonight, huh?
No. Nathan Gilbert, for the record, try not to be terribly redundant. The subject site covers a 2.12 acre area. You can see illustrated on the map to the northwest of this graphic. Uh, the request before the, the request before the planning commission this evening is for special use permits. This is being reviewed under the previous code. Uh, special use permits for grading with fills greater than 10 feet and grading in the open space zone. Uh, the affected parcels are zoned, a large lot residential, open space, and public facility. Approximately 150 feet of the road is within the M-GOD overlay. Uh, large lot, master plan designations are large lot neighborhood, parks, greenways, and open space and public quasi-public. Key issues in staff analysis was site design and compatibility and appropriateness of site grading. Uh, from a site design perspective, the secondary access condition of approval from Santerac, the Santeraculacy subdivision, uh, this provides that. It's also required for the M-GOD Planning Area Three developments, and it's, uh, that secondary access is also called out in the M-GOD overlay. The alternative secondary access road is designed to minimize overall visual impacts. The existing tentatively approved secondary access is 2,621 linear feet and runs extensively through open space and proposed, and a proposed park, uh, within the Santeraculacy development. The alternative access is, is half that, uh, and allows for reduced grading, uh, reduced site grading and development footprint, and significantly reduces the amount of grading, uh, in the open space zone. There are three retaining walls proposed. They range in heights between one and 14 feet. The primary wall proposes a soil nail retaining wall treatment for more natural aesthetic, as Michael covered. The western walls, uh, will be treated with a precast concrete treatment and a six-foot bench. Conditions number six through seven require matching earth tone colors and additional geotechnical analysis. There are three areas of limited fills, greater than 10 feet for the access road, of maximum fills of almost 21 feet. Conditions eight through 10 address the enhanced grading techniques, which, which are in the new code, uh, and are standard to condition, uh, grading hillside projects, uh, under the old code. A site design minimizes the visual impacts, generally blends in with the site topography. The grading would impact 30 mature conifer trees. Uh, condition number 11 requires a one-to-one native tree replacement on the subject parcels. That's more of a reforestation than a landscaped treatment. That would be, um, spreading native, native coniferous species to ensure a one-to-one replacement is achieved on the site. And condition number 12 requires an improvement and maintenance agreement with the steamboat ditch, and a preliminary letter, uh, has already been provided by the company. Uh, Michael shared the, uh, photo simulations of the soil nail retaining wall. Staff recommends approval of the special use permits based on compliance with the applicable findings and subject to the conditions listed in your staff report. Available for any questions.
Thank you, Nathan. Commissioners, let's do disclosures, and we'll start with Commissioner, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Johnson, I received and read emails and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Dragic, same disclosures.
Commissioner Villanueva, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Munoz, I'm aware, I'm, uh, familiar with the site.
Commissioner McGaw, I received and read emails, spoke briefly with the applicant's representative, and previously visited the site.
Uh, Commissioner Taylor, I'm familiar with the site, no, and I received emails. Michelle, I have one public comment for him, or another one is coming, it seems.
Yes, another one is coming. And then I did receive an email, um, in opposition that was forwarded to the planning commission and has been entered into the record. No voicemails were received.
Okay, thank you. Um, so this, uh, Carly Borchart is in- I'm sorry?
Chance, go first.
Whoever wants to go first. Uh, Chance Reading? You'll have three minutes when you get up to the podium, and it looks like you're in opposition.
All right. Hi, guys. My name is Chance Reading. Um, I'm a part of the Verde Community Council. Sorry, I was a little scrambling. I'm a little late here. Um, I'm a part of the Verde Community Council, been a part of the text amendment process, and, um, I also happen to live right next to this area, um, actually border on this. Um, I just wanted to speak about a couple of things. Um, one is the traffic, two is the impact of the wildlife. I know they say that there has to be a road built here. Um, I kind of disagree. There has to be a secondary emergency access was the original plan. Um, it's evolved into a secondary access, and now this is actually going to be the primary entrance and access for the entire Santerac portion that's going to be on the upper part. Um, so the impact to the adjacency is going to be, um, pretty extreme. Um, to give you an idea, I think the South Verde Road currently has 350 day trips. They're going to put over 13,000 is what they noted, and I think that's an underestimate. So we're talking about 3,800% increase. Um, I just want to- This is, um, the, this is from Endow, the report. This is the projected mule deer herd in the area, and this is from, obviously, up to 2015. I added the little red line there just to give you a perspective of where we're at with this. Um, in this area, this is the GPS tracking data from 2017 for the mule deer herd. Uh, this is a, a big wildlife area that we're about to be, that we're about to build over. Um, this is a zoomed-out version, gives you an idea. Um, this is truckie. They're coming down, and then this is where they bed in the winter. So this is their range. Um, that's also one species, and, um, that's only a handful of them on the tracking data. Um, this is the image from Manhard. Um, what they're not telling you is the number of trees, and I did a, I, I'm, you know, like I said, I'm really familiar with this area. These are mature, 100-year-old plus pines. It's really rare for our area. There's quite a few that you can see. I counted 25. I wouldn't be surprised if it ended up being twice that, um, once you consider the width and, and how high they're going through one of the main groves there. Um, this is, uh, the cross piece. One of the main things that we tried to work with these guys on, and, um, this is, again, the cross section, um, that's going to be coming across, um, what we're kind of trying to prevent is, uh, is a, create a wildlife refuge within this structure, which they've done. Um, you can see here, um, the yellow lines that I put on this map are what we're trying to keep as a wildlife corridor. We already have some houses here that we would like to see removed, but this road and, and the big rock wall is going to go right across what we're trying to prevent. Uh, you know, kind of a, a, a complete separation of this heavily treat area. There's tons of, um, species that are living in this. One last thing, um, this is the, uh, the curve that's going to dump 15,000 car loads a day. Um, this is my house right here. This is my home, and that's what the driveway looks like when you turn to the left from my driveway. One of the things that I think would be appropriate, um, special use permit D, um, what we'd like to see is mitigation, and I think if this road is going to go here, they need to straighten this bend out, and they need to, at a minimum, take the infrastructure all the way to the highway, is what we believe, as part of their grading SUP.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Carly Borchart. You know the drill.
I do. Good evening. Thank you for listening tonight. Um, so I've been a Verde resident since childhood, and I sit on the Ward Five NAB, so I hope that you guys have already received my comments, but I just wanted to take a moment to maybe better illustrate some of my points. Um, I had hoped to have a short video to play with you, for you tonight, but unfortunately, that wasn't screened beforehand. So, I will say that I agree with, uh, Mr. Pawnee, that they have a better design and that they are meeting their criterias within their own site. Um, however, my issue is that this all dumps onto, uh, small country roads that are not designed or able to handle this type of traffic that the access will generate. Um, my concern lies with the safety and welfare of the existing residents. This access does not facilitate the intent, nor does it meet some of the SUP findings. The access was initially intended, as Chance mentioned, as an emergency access. The general SUP findings I don't feel that meets is A, the proposed use is compatible with the existing surrounding land uses and development. C, there are, will be adequate services and infrastructure to support the proposed development, and D, the proposal adequately mitigates traffic impacts of the project and protects a safe pedestrian environment. Again, what I'm referring to is coming out of the project. Um, and the reason I say that, and what I disagree with, is that they meet the M-GOD standards. Those state, Section I four, traffic studies, states that each development application will include a traffic analysis identifying the roadway improvements necessitated by that particular development. That is not being done. For intent and clarification on that, it's necessary to refer back to the Development Standards Handbook, where it is clearly stated that there were two criteria for assessing those impacts. One was any impacts, traffic, level of service, and level of congestion on the existing Verde community, and the second one is the traffic design, both interior and exterior, to any development needed to be minimized on, on traffic impacts for the rest of the Verde community. So, obviously, it's been incredibly frustrating that these projects have come before you and city council prior to these infrastructure improvements being identified. Some of you may be aware that, uh, Councilwoman Jordan put in a request to the RTC for a Verde transportation plan. I have confirmed that that study is still in the procurement process, and they anticipate getting board approval to start the project next month. Should you feel differently that this project does meet the criteria and findings necessary, I would like to request a condition of approval be placed on this project to adhere to and possibly share in the costs of the improvements deemed necessary by RTC in the coming year, um, once those are made available. Thank you, as always, for your time and your service to our community.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Okay, we will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions of either the applicant or of Nathan. Who'd like to start? Commissioner Dragic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, question for Nate. I guess just notable, uh, from public comment, is there a reason to believe that this is going to become a primary access point? My understanding was, was secondary and emergency.
It's a secondary access local collector with a 3,000, uh, vehicle ADT, the same as the, as the Santerac approval.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That was it.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nate, um, there was a comment, actually, as part of the presentation, you discussed the one-to-one mitigation for the tree. Um, however, when I'm, I guess I'm confused because by the, uh, the condition, it appears that the re- revegetation is actually seedlings-
Mm-hmm.
-rather than, um, you know, larger, larger trees. So can you basically explain what the, the thought process is in terms of not requiring, like we do elsewhere where we've got a larger tree replacement or a, you know, two-to-one mitigation? Here, it's a one-to-one with seedlings.
Yeah. This is similar to a condition that was imposed on Ventana in coordination with, uh, our staff member, who's also a landscape architect and consultation with the, uh, city arborist. Uh, it, it's essentially a reforestation, it's, as opposed to, say, in a more urban environment where, um, you, you have a, you have a mature decorative tree, and you'd want to replace it with a larger one to, to replace that visual mitigation. Uh, the intent here is to have, uh, really, again, a more of a reforestation, where you have, uh, a licensed arborist or other qualified professional, uh, have a, um, uh, plan developed that, uh, that would, that would ensure that the native conifers grow, uh, at the, the healthiest means possible, and that would be, uh, proposed through the seedling planting in a, in a detailed plan.
Okay, so does that include, um, like, a one-to-two-year irrigation, temporary irrigation program?
Typically, it would not, no. It would be, but it would, it would be a required plan by, by a certified arborist or other qualified individual, uh, to ensure that, uh, that a long-term, um, uh, process, that that mitigation would be achieved. It would be supported by bonding with typical, in, in conjunction with the revegetation plan.
Okay. And then, while we're at it, I add a question about maybe one of the comments, and actually, I think it's a condition as well, um, that requires basically this, this whole, there's a requirement, I think it's number five, that ties this to the M-God text amendment that this body hasn't heard yet. Um, and I guess I'm, I'm not sure in terms of what the expectation is with, you know, is there, is there anticipated changes to the text amendment? We heard some comments tonight talking about how that, excuse me, may or not apply here. So maybe, can you explain to me what the rationale is for waiting for that, or what the content might be that's dictating this condition?
It's sort of a technicality, Nathan Gilbert, senior planner. Uh, the Santeraculacy zoning map amendment component, that was a bundled, that application was bundled, the master plan zoning map amendment, tentative map, special use permit, was, was all bundled. The adoption of the zoning is contingent upon, there's a, uh, base zoning map in that M-GOD overlay that, uh, unorthodox, that would need to be addressed, um, one way or the other, be it, be it deleted, uh, be deleted or, or what have you, um, in order to effectuate that zoning. So that's just to ensure that the adopted zoning, uh, that this road would be leading to, um, does, does in fact occur.
Okay, so the, the condition isn't impacting the previously reviewed, um, tentative map or that, that we're looking at that's precipitating this. It, I, I guess, so you're basically saying it is tied to a cleanup that's happening in that text amendment in order to-
It's-
-validate the zoning that it's going through?
It's specifically, uh, intended to ensure that that adopted zoning and, and that tentative map is fully implemented.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Villanueva.
Commissioner Villanueva, for the record, I have questions for Nathan. Or you know what? I'm sorry. Let's start with the applicant. I apologize for making walk up. Okay, so condition 12, um, regarding steamboat dish requires, um, it says requires written documentation from the SCIC demonstrating that all improvements are accepted and any required maintenance agreements between the development and the SCIC are executed prior to the approval. The only thing I see here from SCIC, and I think I'm, I'm making sure I'm looking at the right thing, is just stating that you guys are in communication. It doesn't say anything of substance. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, the, the process, Michael Pawnee, for the record, on behalf of the applicant, the process with the Steamboat Ditch Company is, as we get closer to final design, we submit that goes to their plans. They have an encroachment permit application process that's run through their engineers, and then their engineers will have any comments on the final design, any changes we need to make to mitigate any potential impacts on their irrigation operations. And then steamboat ditch will require what they call a license and maintenance agreement be entered into with the applicant prior to any construction. So this, uh, this condition of approval just ensures that we follow that encroachment permit application process that Steamboat uses and provide evidence to the city prior to building permit that Steamboat has signed off, and we have entered into whatever agreements they require for us to move forward and enter into their right-of-way. they require for us to move forward and enter into their right-of-way.
How's this going to impact Steamboat? How's this accessway going to impact?
It's, you know, it won't because we're going to make sure that we design it in a way that does not. But any type of crossing of the ditch, obviously, the ditch wants to make sure that that crossing is designed in a way that won't impact their irrigation operations. There's crossings done frequently through the city and that's why Steamboat has this process in place is to ensure that those crossings don't affect irrigation operations.
And with regard to the roads and the traffic, so this access road, what street does it connect to? I mean, I know you have some images.
It connects into South Verdi Road. I don't know if you can pull up my PowerPoint.
And what kind of traffic does that road get right now?
So, again, speaking to traffic at the time of, let me pull it up. To the left there, you see that T that connects into South Verdi Road to the left. There was extensive discussion at the time of the tentative map approval before City Council about traffic impacts from the project as a whole and specifically secondary access. I know it was a condition of this, or a concern of this commission when we came before them. A traffic study, master traffic study was prepared. We had traffic engineers describe the city, the impacts on that road. It's a secondary access. It is not the primary access for this project for a number of reasons, most importantly, just logistically. It's easier to go out, the primary entrance, which is on Boomtown Garson Road. But there was extensive discussion and additional conditions of approval placed on the tentative map to mitigate the impacts of the 3,000 ADT coming down this roadway. So when we speak about traffic, that's not an issue. That's before you tonight. This intersection, as you see the design of the intersection and the outlet of the cars on this intersection, was considered, debated, and approved by the council. It's the same cars, same number of vehicles, same outlet. We're not changing that at all. We're just changing what's happening as you go further south, where it comes up, up the canyon. And so the issue before you tonight is, are we mitigating those cuts and fills? But the traffic itself, it's already been evaluated by council and approved.
Okay. But that was for an access road and this is, okay, so you said earlier that this road has to be here, right? That's what you said. Why does it have to be here?
MGD requires it for any development within MGD Planning Three, our tentative map conditions of approval requirement. That's Condition Number Seven in our tentative map approvals.
But NDOT says it defers to local government.
I'm sorry, MGD.
Oh, N-God, okay.
The mask makes it kind of hard to understand. Yeah, MGD, the Morton Garson Overlay District, requires secondary access be provided for any development up in the Planning Area Three. There has to be secondary access to the west in this area.
But that amendment hasn't gone through yet.
MGD is approved. So maybe a little more background for you. MGD is an overlay district that dates back over a decade. It is the overlay zoning for this area that our tentative map and other zonings had to conform to, which we do. But one of the weird quirks of the MGD is there's a map in there that shows zoning and it says that the zoning will actually be dictated by the tentative map. To Mr. Johnson's comment, we disagree that Condition Number Five is required because MGD was automatically, in our opinion, updated when the council approved our zoning. But regardless, the technical amendment that has to come forward is simply replacing that map with the map that council approved. All of the other things that are going on with MGD have nothing to do with our project or that condition. We just need that simple technical amendment. But for purposes of the special use permit, our position is whether or not that amendment comes forward is not relevant to the special use permit findings you have to make.
Madam Chair, one more question. What happens if this doesn't go through? What happens if we don't approve?
If you don't approve this alignment?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, what would happen? What would be?
Well, again, it's the railroad's preferred alignment. It's one that they've agreed to and that they've agreed to allow us to construct. So it would be very problematic. There has to be access through here somewhere. It has to cross the railroad right-of-way and this is the alignment that they've told us we have to use. So it's, this is what we need. And again, I kind of come back to the findings and what you have to show is in terms of, really, the only reason we had to come before you is because part of it's in the open space on our property and part of it's the fills that we have to do.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Gower.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of questions for staff and then one question for Mr. Pawnee. Nathan, to follow up on a couple of questions that Commissioner Johnson had, just so I'm clear. So the primary versus secondary access question. So the design of this roadway does not facilitate a type of access that would be more consistent with a primary accessway versus a design that would be more in line with a secondary or ancillary type access?
No, it's a residential collector, the same as the tentatively proposed in the Santera Quilice.
So the design would be the same regardless?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Next question, who, I should know this, but remind me, who's maintaining this roadway?
This would be a city-maintained roadway.
City Reno? Okay. To go back also to Commissioner Johnson's question, I apologize, on the trees, for the revegetation on that condition, does the city ever implement any sort of security fee or deposit to ensure that these, you know, mitigation programs actually come to fruition?
Yes, and that would be part, as part of the grading, that they're all required, grading projects are required to submit security for revegetation. This would be included within that scope.
So they'd have to reach a certain growth rate to?
Yeah, they would submit, they would submit a plan in addition to that for staff review and it would be part of that security.
Okay, thank you. Last question for you, from staff's opinion, does this design and alignment, is it consistent with the open space and corridor approach that was approved as part of the tentative map that allowed, you know, the open space corridors for wildlife to move? Is it consistent with that approach that was approved?
Yes, in fact, it significantly reduces grading in the open space. There's only 150 feet of roadway that's in the open space compared to the vast majority that ran through designated open space areas in the previous approval.
Okay, thank you. Michael, I have a question for you as well, specific to finding D for general special use permit. You mentioned that it's, that this commission should be able to make that finding for a safe pedestrian environment. Can you walk me through how we can make that finding that it's a safe pedestrian environment?
Yes, because it provides a six-foot sidewalk along the roadway that will provide pedestrian connectivity consistent with the MGD trails and access requirements. There is nothing there today, but this will provide a sidewalk that connects into the trail system within the, that's identified in the tentative map and required for development on the project.
And that's going to be a publicly, Nathan confirmed, City Reno maintained, public access?
Trails within the project will be maintained by the project and the HOA, of course. The sidewalk is part of the city's right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Munoz.
Yeah, this question's for the applicant. Sorry, I tried to catch it for you down there. I couldn't get my button on. Commissioner Munoz, for the record. When, when parts of this project were brought before us, the studies for the wildlife weren't conducted and that was something that was going to be in the process as far as bridges go over the freeways, things like that, to make sure that this corridor isn't taken away for the wildlife. Now, Condition 13 says that that will be addressed. Has there been any type of studies or anything yet done that will address that?
Yes, and I'm glad you asked that question. So following the commission meeting, before we got to council, we spent those months having extensive outreach with Endow and we were able to develop a wildlife mitigation plan to Endow's acceptance. We front-loaded it and that includes all of the things about the wildlife corridors, preservations of those, the vegetation, everything that Endow wanted to see. It also included a mitigation fund. I think it was around $600,000 of wildlife mitigation monies that we're paying compensatory mitigation in there as well. But the short answer is, part of the approval of the tentative map, we did have an Endow-approved wildlife mitigation plan and that's part of the project.
Nathan, I have a quick question. The tentative map says there has to be a secondary access, right?
Correct.
So when it was approved, was it a secondary access or was it an emergency access?
It's a secondary access. The condition says emergency secondary access, but that, again, the eighty, the average daily traffic volume and the classification of the road are identical.
Okay, so the road hasn't changed from what was previously?
No, the location has changed.
Okay. The location has changed and it's, the impacts have minimized, been minimized. Is that accurate? And I'm just going to ask this question because it was brought up under public comment and I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but I want to put it on there. Is there any way to add a condition to tie this road to any sort of improvements or recommendations that were to come out of the RTC Verdi Improvement Study?
That would not be staff's recommendation.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we got that covered. Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, other comments or questions? Sorry, Commissioner Villanueva.
Nathan, Commissioner Philonueva, for the record. Nathan, I have a question. So you say emergency secondary access, is that emergency hyphen secondary access? Is that emergency access? Or is it like just secondary access for emergency purposes? What was approved and, or for the tentative map?
Nathan Gilbert, Senior Planner, that condition came from, and verbiage came from the City Council. But Planning Area Three of the MGD area, which is, you know, again, only 150 feet of this road is included in it, but all those developments require a secondary access. This, this is a secondary access, local, or, excuse me, residential collector street with the same average daily traffic as was approved with the secondary access in the Santera Quilice development.
Okay, and then how, how is it that we're ensuring or that the applicant is ensuring that this is not going to be more traffic than what the study is anticipating? Because there are a lot of houses there and there's really only that one access on the other end. And I know you guys are saying the impact would be nominal and City Council already proved it, but how, how do we know? What's the enforcement mechanism?
Applications are reviewed by engineering when, when final maps come in. So again, this, this alternate alignment doesn't change the traffic count or the mitigations and conditions of approval and required approvals by, by other agencies for the road network.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gower? No. Commissioners, other questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
Commissioner Johnson, thank you. I just wanted to follow up, Nathan, just as a, maybe a clarification in circling back to the questions that I asked you previously and from what Chair Taylor indicated on the request for public comment tonight. Understanding what we're, the scope of what we're looking at tonight is the, basically the cuts and fills and the open space. But going back to my question about the MGD text amendment that we're going to be seeing at the next one, based on some of the comments that we've received this evening, and maybe you don't know or maybe we're not there yet, but are some of these questions about, or additional discussions with respect to some of the wildlife corridor and some of the other traffic information that's going on, are those things that would be appropriate and potentially discussion topics and conditions as a part of the text amendment for the MGD?
Nathan Gilbert, I know it could, and I'm glad you brought that back, was when you asked me that, I didn't have my, my staff report in hand. So I did want to clarify that Condition Five references that text, excuse me. The final language in that is that that text amendment had occurred or is no longer applicable. And again, this, that condition is specifically related to that zoning map. That text amendment is a work in progress. And again, I wanted to clarify that Condition, Condition Five is, does have that caveat or is no longer applicable. That condition was added to this project to make sure that that zoning, as adopted, is effectuated and that that was the only reason.
Okay, so in keeping with what we're hearing from the applicant, thinking that it's probably not applicable, that's looking ahead at however that's going to be shaking out, may or may not have any impact whatsoever on this because it's just the open space zoning that we're dealing with as a part of this special use permit?
That's correct.
Okay. But to the bigger picture, that is a broader text amendment discussing the MGD as a whole and how it relates to our current, you know, zoning and how the various entities involved in it are going to be having their, their projects reviewed.
And I guess I should clarify, regardless of the status of that, you know, council-initiated text amendment, the plans approved are subject to the plans in place at time of adoption. So any changes made to that wouldn't affect an approved project. I just want to make that clear, that those approvals are subject to the code in place at time of approval and the conditions of approval for the project.
Understood. So we're looking, which is a discussion about this specific, you know, those tentative maps that are there, but from a broader perspective for the overall MGD and anything that's still in progress, that's what's going to be subject to review on that text amendment?
That's correct.
And again, I understand we don't have that in front of us and it's not an agendized item. I'm just trying to understand how this relates to some of the comment in the project that we're looking at right now. Thank you, Nathan. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioners, other questions or further discussion? Commissioner Villanueva.
I just have some final comments before we complete this conversation. So I'm, I, I know that you guys said that this tentative map was approved by council. I just have concerns with, I have concerns with the infrastructure. I've driven on that street several times and I, I mean, the infrastructure's just not there and I'm concerned about safety and there's a lot of, I mean, it's a grown area and I'm just concerned that the infrastructure's not developing as fast as some of the developments are. And so I think that prevents me from, you know, from these, from determining that these findings are, from making a determination on these findings. Thank you.
Thank you. Other Commissioners? Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sort of echo those concerns. Fundamentally, for me, the project that this is associated with, in my opinion, is not compatible with the existing surrounding land uses and development and is not in substantial conformance with the master plan. Fundamentally, just fundamentally. The challenge, as we get deeper into the projects, is that our scope narrows and we're looking at specific pieces of the project. And specific pieces in this case are related to the grading of a secondary access that's already been approved as part of a tentative map. So our decision space is quite a bit more limited than it was with the tentative map. So it's sort of paints us, or paints this commissioner into a corner a little bit in the sense that overall, like I said, I do not feel that this project as a whole meets those findings. Looking at it from the perspective of grading is quite a bit of a different lens. So just wanted to put that on the record, Madam Chair. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower. Are you ready for a motion? I'm going to look to this side. Or any side.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Dragic, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
In regards to case number LDC 22-0007, Santera Quilice Secondary Access, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the SUP subject to the conditions listed in the staff report and specifically this SUP, I can meet the findings.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Madam Chair. Commissioner Johnson. I'm, I listened to what Commissioner Gower said and he, as always, articulates my thoughts better than I do and I appreciate that. But I am looking at the, the findings and the project and the alignment of those and based on that, I can make the findings and will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, some discussion, other discussion? Commissioner Gower?
Madam Chair, I just want to put on the record that I, again, fundamentally, I do not think this development is appropriate for this area. I feel that Verdi is unduly under pressure as a community by this and other development associated with MGD. as a community by this and other development associated with M-God without the sufficient infrastructure in place to support the development and avoid impacts on the community of Verdai. It's a fundamental issue that's going on in that area that this city needs to get a handle on because it's a big deal. And I know that we're working on it as a city, and I hope that we continue to do so. So in that sense, I'm not for this. As a, however long this road is, in the context of meeting the findings for a grading plan, I can meet the findings. So I will be voting for this piece of a larger puzzle that I do not agree with.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Dracula.
Just some comment as well. I'm in agreement with the majority of what Commissioner Gower said. I've driven those roads many times. They do have infrastructure issues. There is a lot of concern. I know the conversation's been going on for more, you know, well before I got here, but I understand some of the issues at hand and obviously all sides being said, but I'm in agreement that there needs to be a heavy focus, hopefully, from the council on looking at that pressure that Verdai is under.
Thank you, Commissioner Villanueva.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to add to that conversation. With the findings, there were additional findings that, that I didn't discuss on the record, but I do want to point out, one of the findings is the proposed use is compatible with the existing surrounding land uses and development. I just don't see that that's the case. Again, with the infrastructure, it cuts through a ditch. Then you add on the grading. So that's, I mean, like I said, I had other comments. I just didn't put them on the record because we're limited on time. But I guess I'd do so now. Thank you for your time.
We always have time for, for comments and if, when we go through the vote, you are encouraged to discuss the findings that you couldn't make. So are we ready to move on to a vote or are there other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Can we do a roll call vote?
Yeah, absolutely, Michelle.
You want me to start?
Yes, please.
Taylor?
Um, yes.
Dracula?
Yes.
Gower?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Munoz?
Sorry, I'm still. No, and I cannot make all the findings.
Villanueva?
No, I cannot make all the findings.
But the vote is four in favor and two opposed, one absent. So the motion passes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Very good discussion, Commissioners. We will move on to item number six, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Johnson, I've completely forgotten what we went through at our last meeting for the regional. I believe that the City Reno item, which was the power line revision there at Military and Lemon Drive, was approved at regional. It had to be approved because it was a major utility corridor. Commissioner Gower, if you remember, is anything else that was on that agenda?
No, but I remember at the last meeting, Commissioner Johnson, that you failed to mention that you're the new chair of the Regional Planning Commission.
Oh, yeah. I am, I didn't see that as being a newsworthy item. But I guess I will say from the, the, the meeting scheduled for October has been canceled. There was not enough agenda items, and the one item that they had needed to be postponed for additional discussion at the county. So the next meeting is actually the sixth of December, I believe. Because of the Thanksgiving holiday, everything is shifted around. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number seven, and I apologize, we have a new face sitting here that was not, we didn't introduce. So welcome.
Chris Pingree, Director of Development Services, for the record. Thank you. As far as staff announcements today, from the city manager's office, we have rebranded the name of Community Development to Development Services here at the City Reno. Mr. Arlo Stockham is no longer with the city. He left, he left the City Reno on September 28th. I was appointed as Director of Development Services on September 29th. Since Nathan's here and he's our lone man from the planning department, he was promoted to Senior Planner about that same time. We have a, yes, congratulations and well deserved. We have a new planning manager that we have gone through the recruitment process and offer letter has been received back. Jason Laboue, who will, Jason Garcia Laboue, who will start November 8th here at the City Reno as the planning manager in Development Services. And we want to announce our new Assistant Director, Ms. Angela Foose, will be returning to the City of Reno on next Tuesday, October 22nd, 26th, I'm sorry. Actions taken by City Council on previous planning commission items, the Las Briesas Boulevard rezoning, it was approved and adopted by City Council. NV Center One and NV Center Two, the rezoning ordinance introduction went before council on 10/13 and was referred to as second reading and adoption. Next planning commission meeting is November 3rd. This meeting will have a 5:00 PM start time. And that's all I have for staff announcements. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome and congratulations, Nathan. Very well deserved. And just, you are Chris Pingree, right? Okay, great.
Quick background. So I've been with the city six and a half years. I was our Building and Safety Manager and Deputy Director of Community Development, Building Department and Land Development. The acronym was way too long to fit on a business card. And so, like I said, I've been here a little while, new to the planning commission, and thank you for the welcome.
Great, glad you're here. Item number eight, Commissioner's suggestion for future, future agenda items. Commissioner Villanueva?
I'd like to have a presentation on the Washoe Lands Bill and a briefing on that, and I just am not as informed on that. And I know it's not really in front of us, but I just would like to know what's going on with that. Thank you.
Commissioners, other items?
Okay, moving on to item number nine, public comment. Michelle, do we have any public comment?
I did not receive any public comment for this item.
Okay, we're going to close public comment and move on to number 10, adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Have a good night.